Almost seven o'clock. Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. It is seven o'clock. Welcome to the Lakewood City Council Agenda for Monday, February 7, 2022. Madam Clerk, if you'd call the roll, please.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Bell.
Here.
Councilmember Bokey.
Here.
Councilmember Branstadter.
Here.
Councilmember Farmer.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Moss.
Here.
Mayor Whelan.
President.
You have a quorum?
Thank you very much. Now, if you'd stand and join me in a pledge of allegiance to our nation's flag, followed by a moment of silence for our men and women serving overseas as well as here in the United States. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. We now turn to the Proclamations and Presentations portion of tonight's agenda. And the first proclamation we have is the celebration of the 20th anniversary of the sister cities' relationship between the city of Lakewood and Okinawa City, Okinawa, Japan. And for this, we have our Lakewood Sister Cities Association Chair Connie Coleman-Lackerty.
Thank you, Mayor Whelan.
Join us here, if I can get to my screen. Well, we're very pleased to have you here tonight and want to celebrate all the fine work you do.
Thank you. Some of our members are on listening also, so that's nice.
Fantastic. Well, on behalf of the city council, I issue the following proclamation. Whereas in April 1996, the city of Lakewood and Okinawa City, Okinawa, Japan, began exploring the possibility of establishing a sister-city relationship. And whereas on January 16, 2002, the city of Lakewood and Okinawa City officially formed as sister cities. And whereas the relationship has been beneficial to both cities and residents of the two communities. And whereas the Lakewood Sister Cities Association has coordinated numerous exchanges and engagements events for representatives of the city of Lakewood and Okinawa City, such as student exchanges, video conference exchanges, art exchanges, and delegation visits. And whereas during the 20 years of courtship between the city of Lakewood and Okinawa City, both our cities have come to form a deeper understanding of our peoples and have formed many lasting friendships. And whereas the city of Lakewood looks forward to continuing to develop the sister-city relationship and collaborating on future exchanges between the two cities. Now, therefore, the city of Lakewood City Council is hereby deeply grateful and proud to celebrate the 20th anniversary of the sister cities' relationship between the city of Lakewood and Okinawa City, Okinawa, Japan. Reclaim the 7th day of February 2022, Jason Whelan, Mayor. Ms. Coleman-Lackerty, the floor is yours.
Thank you again, Mayor Whelan. I'm very proud to be representing the Lakewood Sister City Association and our first sister city of Okinawa City, Japan, to acknowledge our 20-year anniversary. I'm also proud tonight to deliver Okinawa City Mayor Kiu Hui with the translation of their congratulations to you and the city council, as well as an ISA performance of congratulations to follow. But first, Mayor Whelan, I would like to let you know that Mayor Nakasone, who was the mayor at the time we concluded this sister-city agreement in 2002, with the mayor, former mayor, Bill Harrison, passed away earlier this year. So I would like to read their congratulations.
Please.
So I am very happy to address that City, Lakewood City and Okinawa City are celebrating the 20th anniversary of our sister-city relationship. The exchange between the two cities started when the member of Okinawa, Kenji Kai of Washington State, introduced us to your city during the Worldwide Yuchi Na Chu Festival, which was held in Okinawa in 1995. Since then, over the past 20 years, we have deepened our relationship with your city by dispatching our junior high school students, sending our city's performing arts groups to the international festival held in your city, and supporting our citizens to study in your city. I would like to once again thank the people of Lakewood City for their love for Okinawa City and our citizens, which has followed the friendship between two cities to be handed down to this day. In this address, I would like to congratulate Lakewood City and Okinawa City on the 20th anniversary of our sister-city relationship, wishing that the bond between the two cities will be further strengthened through exchange programs and that we will continue to develop each other. February 7, 2022, Sashio Kuei, Okinawa City Mayor.
Well, thank you very much for that. And I understand there's a video that's going to be played as well, or?
Yes, they developed, produced special ISA performances just for this celebration. So they sent it to us, and I think they're going to be showing it for you tonight.
Great. Ms. Schumacher, I think that's your key. Thank you.
[speaking Japanese] For the sake of the community, before we start, today, in Okinawa, the American Wasei County, Lake Wood City, Lake Wood City, is celebrating the 20th anniversary of the city. So we are celebrating the celebration of the Lakewood Society of Okinawa City. So we are celebrating the 20th anniversary of the Lake Wood County. So we would like to invite you to attend, so please, you may come. So, to introduce the Lake Wood Society of Okinawa City. The Lakewood Society of Okinawa City is organized by 11 groups. There is no delay at all. From slow tempo to tempo, the movement is very rhythmic. Again, this is a difficult event, so I'm not going to be able to explain it. But I'm sure there are some messages that have been conveyed from the past. Other than the other groups, I hope you'll see them again in the future. So, this is the beginning of the 2022 Lake Wood Society of Okinawa City.
If you have a utility meter like this on the side of your house, you could get...
I assume that was the end of the video?
It's fairly long.
Ah, okay. See if Ms. Schumacher is able to complete that piece of it, or is that the extent of it, Mr. Coffield?
No, that is not, Mayor. It's, uh... The performance hadn't even started, so I'm sure Ms. Schumacher is working on it.
Got it.
I will replay the video at this time.
It's always helpful to learn about utilities.
It never fails.
Yeah.
Well, thank you, Ms. Coleman-Lackerty. I know that a lot of work goes into those performances, and the cultural significance is certainly great, and we very much appreciate it. Hopefully, our thanks and good wishes will go back to our fine friends in Okinawa. And we look forward to the point someday where we can meet again in person and enjoy those cultural exchanges. So thank you very much, and thank you to our friends in Okinawa, Japan.
And I will send them a recording of this, if that's okay with you.
Absolutely. I appreciate it.
So they can hear the words from you.
Absolutely. We very much appreciate it. Thank you.
Well, you guys have a great evening.
And we'll talk to you soon. Thanks again for coming tonight and for doing the good work with our Sister Cities Association.
Thank you. You guys have a good night.
Okay, thank you. Next, we will enjoy a proclamation declaring the month of February 2022 as Black History Month. And for this, we will have Jo Ethel Smith, who has been a part and parcel, not just to the city of Lakewood, but to many, many good things here in the city, including our Martin Luther King Jr. Committee, which she has led for many, many years. So, Jo Ethel, if you would join us, and Deputy Mayor Mary Moss, for a proclamation honoring you as well as Black History Month.
Mayor Whelan, Ms. Smith is unavailable to attend this evening. She's not joining us.
Okay, well, Mary Moss, if you would please have the honors of issuing the proclamation on behalf of the city tonight.
Mr. Mayor, you know, so many of our former leaders were great contributors to the progress of our nation. So it is my pleasure to read this proclamation tonight. And it reads, "Whereas Black History Month is celebrated throughout the United States of America, during the month of February. And whereas all Americans are reminded that our nation is comprised of all people are created equal and should be judged not by the color of their skin, but by the content of their character. And whereas this proclamation affords an opportunity to reflect on the and contributions of Black Americans and to honor many Black leaders who have contributed to the progress of our nation. And whereas there exists the need to strengthen the insight of all our residents regarding this of human rights and to eliminate discrimination toward minority groups. And whereas people are encouraged to prepare to assume leadership roles, sorry, whereas people are encouraged be prepared to assume leadership roles to work toward and the achievement of freedom, justice, and equity. And whereas the city of Lakewood is committed to the idea of a free society and its community of great diversity, it values and celebrates, and is dedicated to the fraternity and community of all people. Now, therefore, the Lakewood City Council do hereby proclaim February 22nd, February 26th, 2022, as Black History Month, and encourage all Lakewood people to join us in observation, proclaim the 7th day of February, 2022, Jason Whelan, Mayor."
Well, thank you very much, Deputy Mayor Moss. And I believe we have a video from Jo Ethel to share with us tonight in her absence. Ms. Schumacher?
I'm Jo Ethel Smith. I formerly of Lakewood. I call Lakewood my home. I have spent over 50 years here in Lakewood. I came here in 1962. I will always call Lakewood my home. And this is my city.
That's right.
Well, as I look back over how important Black History Month, and I think in terms of what our children are getting in school, even to know the people in the community who have been instrumental in bringing this city the way it is. I think that's an approach that we need to have. Oh, Dr. Claudia Thomas, that's my best friend. We're sorority, we're sorority sisters. And when you see one, you would see the other. We were just kind of cloned at the hip. And that was because she was the first deputy mayor with Harrison. And then she became mayor of the city, the first Black African-American mayor in the state of Washington. That was such an honor for us. And Mary, who's on the council now, getting her started was really an exciting time for us, too, with Claudia and me getting Mary on. And I was, I'm so proud of her that she is still on council. And I was trying to think of some of the other people who were on council. As I said, I have forgotten more than I remember because of my youth. Andy Gerner was one lady that is so instrumental in my life, too. She's not as well as, because we're all young now, see? I get excited thinking and then wishing that I could remember some of the other names. I see the faces are coming, but remembering some of the names, it's kind of hard.
David Boyd.
Oh, yes, yes. Rita was his wife. Oh, yes. David, Claudia, we were just a group. And, boy, I haven't seen Dave. Haven't seen Dave for quite a while. I'm, as I say, every day that I get up is a gift. And I thank him for the gift that he's given me each day. The gift of love.
I think that deserves a round of applause.
Yes.
Jo Ethel is an amazing person. Thank you, Deputy Mayor, for your heartfelt words and presentation of the proclamation. We very much appreciate that.
You're welcome.
Next, we will turn to a presentation by the Association of Washington Cities, the Retro Program Refund Presentation, presented to us by Alicia Seeger's Martinelli, interim CEO, and Carol Wilms, Director of Member Pooling Programs. And I believe Mary McDougall will give us an overview tonight of the AWC Retro Program Refund.
Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor Moss, and city council members. I'm Mary McDougall, HR Director. And tonight, I'm pleased to welcome Alicia Seeger's Martinelli and Carol Wilms from AWC to share the latest results of our efforts to create a safety culture here at the city of Lakewood and our participation in the AWC Retro Program. But first, I do want to take a minute, although she isn't here tonight, I want to thank and recognize HR Analyst Kat St. Pierre for the incredible job she does coordinating all things safety and workers' comp-related, among many other duties, and thank the city manager and the executive leadership team for their support. We appreciate the opportunity to be part of the AWC Retro Program and the great partnership we have with the AWC Retro staff. And I want to thank Carol and Alicia for being here tonight, and I'll turn it over to them for the presentation.
Well, thank you. I think I'll be going first, and you're welcome to share the slides whenever convenient for you. I want to begin by thanking you, Mayor Whelan, and members of the city council. It is a pleasure to be with you here this evening and talking just a bit about the Retro Program and the Association of Washington Cities as well. As was mentioned, my name is Alicia Seegers Martinelli, and I'm serving as the interim CEO. We're here tonight to recognize the city's involvement in the AWC Retro Program, and most of all, and most importantly, supporting a culture of safety. Before doing so, if you want to move to the next slide, I want to just speak a little bit about AWC generally and the many ways that we serve you, the council, as well as your city employees. As the slide mentions, it is our mission to serve our members through advocacy, education, and services. And the members of the city council and your city staff certainly are quite involved and take advantage of the programs that we do provide. Lakewood is a member of not just the Retro Program, but a couple of other service programs that we provide, the Employee Benefit Trust and the Drug and Alcohol Consortium. You're also very involved with our legislative advocacy work, and we see many of you at our City Action Days and participating in that advocacy work, having good conversations with your legislators. I do want to call out a couple of ways that we are working to keep you involved throughout the short 60-day legislative session this year. We have the Legislative Bulletin that comes to you every Monday and gives you the nuts and bolts about all the different bills that we're following. And one thing that we added this year is our City Action Day calls, which take place on Friday. So if you are interested in having a small group conversation with our lobbyists, I encourage you to join those calls. There's good conversation and dialogue happening there. AWC also provides education for you, the elected officials. We have a Certificate in Municipal Leadership Program, referred to as the CML, and that recognizes elected officials for obtaining education in five core areas. You know, many of you here have attended AWC training and events and have earned or are on your way, well, on your way to earning that CML. So with that and that overview, I'll now turn it over to Carol Wilmes, AWC Member Pooling Programs Director. She's going to share more information with you about the Retro Program and the city's achievements.
Thank you, Alicia. A great introduction to the Association of Washington Cities and mayor and council and other department heads. Thank you all for having us here this evening briefly. The Association of Washington Cities embarked in the Retro Program in 2004. Since that time, we've been pleased to disperse about $9.3 million back to our members, and a great majority of those funds have come about in the last four years. The city of Lakewood joined the AWC Retro Program in 2011. We are so pleased to report to you today that the 2018 year was settled with Department of Labor and Industries at the end of 2021. So we're always looking back three years and settling that financial year. 2018 hallmarks continued success in our positive claims performance. And so we were pleased to disperse to 70 pool members, just under $2.9 million as a refund. Lakewood's portion of that $2.9 million was $111,994. So your city received that at the end of the year. Our claim staff were continuing to work hard for you on a year that was closed with Department of Labor and Industries, 2017. They were able, through protests of claims that were processed, successfully able to overturn additional claims, and we were able to give back additional money for 2017. So the city received an additional check of $5,292 at the end of the year. The Retro Program's success can be attributed to the services that we provide to all our members in safety and compliance. We provide onsite and online training, onsite safety audits. Those have been put on a hold for the last couple of years, but are excited to maybe get those going back again as the state reopens and we can travel and visit the work sites in a safe manner. We have a few employers that are working through Best in Practice Work Safe Employer Award, and then of course, OSHA reporting, which is going on right now with all of our cities. Claims management, we work with all of our employers to make sure that those that have been injured or become ill in the workplace, that we help those claims to their best and final outcome for the employer and the employee. So we encourage early contact with those injured workers to help them navigate the system. We have an employer portal that our employers access and can keep tabs on their claims as well as some reporting that is unique to them. Part of the claims process is encouraging employees to reengage with the workplace as soon as they are physically and mentally able to do so. So we work with employers on transitional work or light duty. The Department of Labor and Industries has a special program that they will share in the salary dollars with the employer. And I'm happy to report that the city of Lakewood in 2021, Mary was mentioning Kat St. Pierre, and she was instrumental in helping the city as well as our staff receive an additional $27,600 through that Stay at Work program. So that's just really fantastic work on the city's part. And then for those claims that get more developed and become more complex, you may see them get protested or hit the Board of Insurance Industrial Appeals, and we also help represent the city at that level. So safety certainly starts at the top. It takes efforts from every employee to create a strong safety culture in the organization. Some employees that stand out at Lakewood in that regard. We've mentioned Kat St. Pierre a couple of times. She is our main contact every day in helping us work with your employees and is a catalyst for transitional work and safety programs. Mary McDougall serves on our Retro Advisory Committee, our governance group that advises our Board of Directors, who is the AWC Executive Committee Board members. And that group provides guidance, much-needed and appreciated guidance and recommendations for developing policies and operating procedures. I also want to acknowledge Chief Zaro. He has presented as a panelist at AWC Conference, as well as doing a highly popular podcast on PTSD and the impact to the workplace. He's been instrumental in helping us to create awareness and educate leaders like yourselves on the importance of the mental well-being of our first responders. And so we are able then to best meet their needs, provide relevant resources for them. So again, they can deal with their issues and be able to return to the workplace to the careers that they love so much. So leadership support is key in your strong safety culture. We would like to recognize the leadership of John Caulfield and his executive leadership team. Gosh, I think it's been more than five years ago now that John invited our staff to meet with his executive leadership team to make workers' comp and safety at the city of Lakewood a priority. And every year since then, the leadership team has become more aware of the impact of workers' comp injuries, not only to the financial bottom line, but more importantly, to the health and safety of each employee. The safety culture at Lakewood starts at the top, carries down to management across all departments, and then to each employee. Truly, each employee home safe every night. It is what we are all about. Currently, the city is working on the Work Safe Employer Award. This award is given to a city meeting eight specific criteria. That includes executive management's involvement in safety, policies, trainings, and risk analysis and prevention. We're here to support you to complete that, so we hope that you achieve that someday. So thank you, mayor and council, for your leadership in exemplifying a safe workplace culture, and congratulations on another successful performance year.
Well, Carol, thank you very much. I see Councilmember Anderson, former mayor emeritus, Don Anderson. Do you have a comment, Don?
Yeah, a question. You know, it's always great to get a refund, and I think more important is our employees are safer. So thank you for collaborating and make that happen, but at the same time, how do we compare to others? You know, it's nice to get a refund, do some numbers out, or where are we in the percentile rank as far as getting back, because that's kind of a measure of how we're doing.
Oh, of course, of course. Well, you have, for the last three years, you've been in the top 10. So I would say that that's consistent performance. I would be more than happy to follow up with your loss ratio specifically. I know we report that to Mary and Kat on a quarterly basis. So be happy to follow up with that, but I think that probably answers your question.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Great. You're welcome.
Any other questions by members of the council? Well, Carol, Alicia, and to you, Mr. Caulfield, and your staff, thank you very much. I think saving money is always a good thing for the taxpayers, but ensuring that our employees are safe and go home safe every night is even more important. So thank you very much for all of your work collectively. It's much appreciated. And to Councilmember Anderson's comment, it's even better to hear that it's really a consistent approach and consistent leadership that has yielded these results, not just, again, to the bottom line, but to the health and safety of our employees and their families. So thank you very much. Our hats are off to all of you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. Yeah, good to see you. Well, next we have our Youth Council Report, and I'm pleased to see Hank Jones in the audience. Mr. Jones, do you have your report tonight?
Yes, I do. Thank you so much for having me.
Good to see you again.
Good to see you. Good evening. I'm excited to talk to you tonight about what the Lakewood Youth Council has been up to recently. We spent a majority of our meeting time today, meeting with representatives from the Lakewood YMCA. Their priority was to listen to what we had to say about getting more teens interested in their programs and offer their resources to assist us in planning the Lakewood Youth Summit. It took our questions about funding for artistic programs and leadership programs that are available to teens. The representatives agreed with us that access and career pathways, reaching essential life skills, and supporting mental wellness for young people should be paramount. It was suggested by the Y that the community cafes we used last year to connect people virtually during the pandemic could be revitalized for teens to have a safe space to talk. And lastly, we heard from Ms. Mari Davis, the Equity, Diversity, and Inclusion Coordinator for our school district, who wanted to discuss the date for the youth summit. The district decided that because of transportation challenges, the summit could not be held on a school day. We now have to make a decision between May 21st or June 4th for the summit. I look forward to updating you very soon on the finer details of this event as it comes into shape. And one more thing, a good portion of us have signed up to volunteer at the upcoming annual silent auction to support caring for kids. The event is this Saturday, and I'm hoping to see you there. And that's all I have for today. Can I answer any questions?
Thank you. Hank, any questions of Mr. Jones? By members of the council? Well, thank you, Hank. When do you know, or when do you think you will know when you have the youth summit date locked down?
Hopefully by next meeting. We make a little bit more progress every time. It used to be, okay, are we going to have it in, you know, like the second semester? Are we going to have it in, you know, this month or that month? And now we have it narrowed down to just two days. So we're going to pick one of them, and we'll just see how it goes from there.
Great.
Yeah.
Well, best wishes on it, and again, let us know if you need any assistance.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for coming. Next, we have our Clover Park School District Report, and I believe I saw Board Member Carol Jacobs in the audience. Ms. Jacobs?
Ms. Jacobs, you should have received an invite to join us on screen.
There she is. Director Jacobs, welcome.
Hold on.
We can hear you.
Okay, we awarded 47 diplomas for our running start, for our Open Doors Program. Open Doors Program are for students primarily who are not in the comprehensive high schools. They may be missing a couple credits. They're realizing that maybe not being in school wasn't a great choice, and so they are coming back and completing their high school diploma. And it's a great program, and that it has grown from 12 students to now 47 graduates. We also have just gotten word that five of our district teachers have completed their National Board Certification project. 13% of all Clover Park School District educators are now nationally board certified. National Board Certification is an advanced teaching certificate, and as part of the process, students and teachers analyze students' work and their delivery, and then they videotape them. They send them to a national project to demonstrate their growth and achievement. It's a great honor that we have this many nationally board certified teachers in our district. In doing that, we've also received an award of excellence from the National Board for Professional Teaching Students for its candidate support of our National Board Certification. A lot of work goes into it, a lot of mentoring. It takes a lot of work for this teacher to do it, for the district to support it, and we have received a national award for that. Jan Lonsway, our supervisor professional, oversees the district's National Board Certified Teacher Program. Also this last week, another great news, one of our bus drivers, Jamie Batiste, was recognized in a very short ceremony by Superintendent Banner for her actions helping a choking student on the bus. She was presented with a thank you cone, a coin, and a note from She was presented with a thank you cone, a coin, and a note from the superintendent. Batiste took query quick action when one of her students began choking during a ride home from Lakes High School. She pulled the bus over, took the, got the students off the bus so that she could attend to the student in need. The student, she performed the Heimlich commuter, Heimlich procedure. The student was able to dislodge the item and um, is well today because of her quick action. So, we are very grateful for the training that she's received and then her quick actions. Last Friday night, we had the opportunity to unveil the new name for the Clover Park High School gym. We held a special ceremony in honor of the new, of the gym, which has been named the Mel Ninnis Memorial Gym. Mel was a teacher in the district who, um, for over thirty years. And in part of the naming process, the committee looked at what has this person done? They have to have done something besides just been a great guy. Well, Mel won a state champion. He was one of the first state championship for Clover Park High School. He also was inducted into National Hall of Fame for the State of National Hall, National Hall of um, uh, coaches for the state of Washington, and he was the first coach that we had in our community to do that. So, um, we did have, it was a game against Delicum. Clover Park was successful, and the gym now will be referred to as the Mel Ninnis Memorial Gym. It was a great night. The family was very appreciative of, of honoring, letting their father, their dad, their grandpa be honored in such a way. Um, COVID updates. Um, I'm gonna just brief over this because if anybody watches the news tonight, everything is changing just as fast now as it was when this whole COVID thing started. I do not have what the district's gonna be planning to do, because we continue to follow the recommendations from the um, state and from our local county health department. But one thing that we are doing is we are offering, continuing to offer free quarantine and isolation meals. So, if we have students who are in need, parents may pick up two days' worth of meals from their student's school. And they're available every other day, and meals include enough food for two days. Now, what's really exciting is our, we have opened up and enlarged our testing center schedule. It was four days from noon to four, I believe. It's now open five days from ten to five, and part of that is predicated because of closing down the old former emission center. And the need has been great. By having this, it's over at Harry E. Lang Stadium, and by having this facility available for this rapid testing, we can get students, staff, and families back into school as quickly as possible. Um, I talked to a citizen today. They thanked me, and they thanked me, not that I did it, but they thanked, wanted me to thank the district. And their thing is, it's actually easier than going to a store or many stores to try to find a kit, and you don't have to have a schedule. You just go, and the wait is usually between five and 10 minutes. So, um, it's a great service. It's held, it was held in the ticket center. It's now held in the um, food um, thing, the food booth. So, it's open to our students and our families. Um, we are still, as every school district in the state, we are offering bonuses for those hard-to-fuel positions for hiring. Because it's due to the pandemic, um, the district has many positions open to fill, such as, the district will provide a bonus of $3,500 to LPN's nurses and bus drivers, and bonuses of 500 to the hired pair educators and to the food service workers. If you know someone who is looking for, and many of these are actually part-time jobs, but interested in working for the district, you can find a list of open positions. We also have our emergency substitute program, because the superintendent literally has his counsel in schools probably one day a week so that we can keep our schools open and not have to close them down due to lack of staffing. So, um, we really need, if you know anybody that's looking for a job, we are hiring, as many other um, agencies are doing so. Uh, the state is continuing to offer free meals for all children in all schools. The district is serving free meals uh, to students eighteen and under for the entire twenty-one, twenty-two school year. Students learning virtually can also pick up meals. Um, families who are enrolled in the schools of virtual learning will contact their neighborhood schools, and meals will be provided, so no child will go hungry during this time. Uh, we also are encouraging, we are getting counts, you know, we have to still account for our foods and and all that is served, so we still are working the free and reduced lunch program so that we can document to the feds how many meals are being served and to whom. Uh, we are really hoping that our snow is behind us, but in the case of our um, more weather where we have to close schools down, they're encouraged to plan for childcare and transportation because of the bad weather, and that did experience this one. Buses can't get up, or if there's a time, because we are at such a bus shortage, we need to make sure that parents have a, have a Plan B to get their kids back to school. President's Day weekend is coming up, February 12th to 15th, and schools will be out at that time. So, that's all we have right now. I mean, I know the superintendent and his council are working incredible hours to keep their kids in school and keep things moving. But we're hoping, you know, with the news coming out about what to do with the COVID thing, we don't know what's gonna happen. We haven't had any conversations about that. Like I said, we are listening to the experts and um, from the county and the state. Any questions?
Thank you, Director Jacobs. Any questions by members of the council? Well, I know you have a lot on your plate and uh, many good things going on at the district, so we thank you for your work and thank the, the directors for their collective work on behalf of the students in the district.
Thank you. We have our hands full, but the reality is every decision we make, we, how does this affect our children? And that's what's the primary concern in how we move forward.
Very much appreciated, and thank you for coming and sharing tonight.
Thank you.
You bet. Take care. Next, we turn to the public comment section of tonight's agenda. Public comments are accepted by mail, email, or by live virtual comment. Comments may be sent in advance by mail or email to Ms. Brianna Schumacher, the city clerk at 6,000 Main Street Southwest in Lakewood, or to her email address, bshumacher@cityoflakewood, cityoflakewood.us. Comments received up to one hour before the meeting have been provided to the city council electronically. The clerk will now read the names of those who have submitted comments in advance. And again, these are comments submitted by mail or email to Ms. Schumacher, the city clerk directly.
Mayor Whalen, we received no comments in advance of this evening's meeting.
Great. Thank you very much. Uh, we will now allow members of the audience present tonight to comment on items relating to any matters uh, related to city business out of the public comments period. These comments are limited to three minutes per session. I ask that you direct comments to the council as a whole and not to any individual council member as required by our council rules. Virtual comments, again, if you'd like to provide live virtual public comments, you can join the Zoom meeting as an attendee by calling the telephone dial at two five three two one five eight seven eight two, enter the meeting ID as indicated, eight six eight seventy-two sixty-three twenty-three seventy-three, or visit zoom.us and enter the meeting ID number that should be on your screen. Upon entering the meeting, please enter your name or other chosen identifier. Use the raise hand feature to be called upon, and for those participating by phone, you can use the raise a hand feature by pressing nine star nine on your phone. Outside of public comment, attendees on Zoom will continue to have the ability to virtually raise hands for the duration of meetings, but you won't be acknowledged, and your microphone will remain muted, except for when you're called upon to speak. So, again, we appreciate you coming tonight, and I'm pulling up the list of attendees here. Madam Clerk, uh, it looks like I can go from the top down. Uh, are there any participating by phone other than those that are, are by Zoom? Because we were gonna try to go back and forth, as I recall, to make sure we were fair to all concerned. Are there any hanging out by phone that would like to make comment first tonight?
I don't have anyone by phone at this time.
Okay, great. So, I will call on uh, Oviano X as the first individual who has raised their hand to present comment tonight.
Hello, good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, magnanimous. Uh, two orders of business that I would like to address. The first thing, I guess, is more of a a question regarding the trees. Uh, I'm really wondering, are they looking into the trees? Uh, Gary Oak trees in spring broke as a preserve rather than tearing them down for another useless warehouse? So, I still don't see the need for another useless warehouse. We have plenty of jobs, plenty of revenue, and, and I see this completely useless and a waste of my tax dollars. Secondly, I would like to address uh, the resignation of Mike Wiley. Uh, why it has not been done, as he is not doing his job as we pay him to do, uh, as well as uh, Mike Zarro, who is allowing multiple failures to slip through his fingers, and for some reason continues to gain praise from, well, really too many people. I, I don't see the point in praising somebody that's allowing failure. I don't praise my employees when they mess up. I don't see it as a good thing. Secondly, on that, uh, I really just wanted to say, with the last remaining of my time, yehuru, all power to the people.
Thank you, sir. And next we have Christina Manetti.
Hello, council members. My name is Christina Manetti. I'm a resident of Lakewood. First, I want to thank you for playing the Taiko um, performance from Okinawa from the youth group. It was really fun to see. It, it's a pity we didn't get to see the end. I think maybe they got faster at the end or something, so uh, maybe we can see that next time. Hopefully, the other cities that we have relationships with will also send um, their performances. It kind of makes me want to learn Japanese, so. Um, I'd like to ask you this evening to reconsider the composition of the ad hoc um, committee tasked with working on tree preservation code amendments. The appointments recommended by Don Anderson, Linda Farmer, and Paul Bokey are scheduled to be approved this evening, as I saw on the agenda. Here are just two of the problems with the recommended appointments. It, there's uh, there's supposed to be the two candidates from the CBDG areas. And um, although it's stated in the request for council actions submitted, submitted by Mr. David Buwer um, that two positions earmarked for future committee members from CBDG areas qualified census tracts have not been appointed, and that the subcommittee will continue its search to find candidates. I'd like to point out that there was one, at least one qualified candidate who did apply for the ad hoc committee from one of these qualified census tracts, according to HUD, the Department of Housing and Urban Development, Mrs. Helena Wagner. Um, a graduate of Oberlin College, she has a longstanding interest in the environment and life sciences, yet she was not selected. Perhaps you did not notice that her address falls within the area of the qualified census tract, one of them, despite the fact that she did point this out in her application. Um, the second problem I'd like to point out is that there's a lack of scientifically oriented appointees or from any environmental organizations. Um, although there were supposed to be at least two candidates and maybe more with a background in biology or other sciences, none were, or it said environmental uh, interest. None, none was, none were chosen for the committee. Um, moreover, all the Audubon Society and Washington Native Plant Society expressed a specific interest in having a representative on the committee. No adults were chosen to represent these two organizations, so I'd just like to ask that you postpone the approval of the appointees to the ad hoc um, tree preservation code amendments committee until, until these issues um, are resolved. So, thank you very much for your time, and um, appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Uh, next, Dennis Haugen.
Dennis Haugen, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, there's, there's too many things. It's just amazing. It's been almost two years since I left Lakewood. And you still look like uh, you're just having an awful time uh, with the China virus. In most states, it's now an endemic and not a pandemic. Things are under control. And it just seems like a long, long time ago. The economy's back in order. But it's in my opinion, and this isn't about any particular elected officials, but the mass of elected officials, there's so many almost criminal minds being elected along the West Coast. Uh, attorneys that become uh, that become uh, district attorneys or attorney generals doing things like no bail and all that sort of thing. And um, it's just becoming like the states on the coast are something you watch and hope you never become like any one of the West Coast states. But I think the answer to this is gonna be the next election. I don't think that you're capable or any other state along the West Coast, and even like New York and some of those, are even capable of solving their problems. They just go on and on and on and on. Then it's, in my opinion, that uh, the education system from top to bottom, and I mean from PhDs all the way down, lawyers all the way down. I can't believe what some lawyers say. And um, I can't believe what a lot of uh, of PhDs say that are in the education system. But they become leaders primarily because they don't have any experience managing anything, and you give them tenure, and the next thing, they can say any dumb thing they want, like mathematics is racist. That's one stupid statement that comes to mind. And then, of course, as far as uh, attorney generals and um, mayors, mayor making stupid comments uh, like uh, a riot is a love fest. It's all gonna have to be solved in an election. It's gonna have to be a big one. And uh, to, to straighten this whole mess out. And you're still sitting there like the China virus is, you know, there's been no difference in two years, whereas where I come, everything is cooking like nothing ever happened, except watching for spillover. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Next, uh, Seven the Panther. I, I believe uh, you have your hand up, but you are, it looks appeared to be muted. Would you like to address the council during public comments, sir?
I'm uh, I'm actually using a friend of mine's phone at the moment because my phone is broke. Uh, my apologies, I didn't get an opportunity to change his name, but I did, however, change my picture. Um, my name is Punchy Carter. I'm the Minister of Defense of the Black Panther Party of Washington. I'm a resident of Lakewood. And you know, we've been coming here as a collective organization quite a bit over the last years to change. But there's one thing that I've noticed out of all of this time that we've been coming. And I, I, the thing that I've noticed is that we, as the community and you, as the city council, or as the local government, as we know, we, we have a fundamental failure to communicate with one another. When I say we have a fundamental failure to communicate with one another, I, I say that, and I mean it, because communication is not only words being spoken and words being heard. Not, it doesn't even necessarily have to be words, but it does have to be comprehended. And then there has to be action upon that comprehension to show your understanding. I've listened to some very intelligent people that I have a great deal of respect for repeatedly tell you that the Gary Oaks should be protected. Yet, every act that you're taking shows how little you care about the, the, the safety of, and the, and the, the survival of the Gary Oaks. You've also been told repeatedly that the community has issues with your police department. And it's not just issues with your police department, it's issues with the way they interact with the community, the way that they quote-unquote do their job, or as Chief Zarro was prone to doing before the rollback occurred, which I'm pretty sure you all did cartwheels for. Oh, they, they passed a bill that's not allowing us to do our job. Well, honestly, if you were doing your job before, there wouldn't be a Black Panther Party in Lakewood, it's a co- because there wouldn't need to be. But the reality of the matter is, our failure to But the reality of the matter is our failure to communicate has left us in a very bad place. A, we don't trust you. B, you don't care about us. So I think we need to find a way to bridge this gap of communication. I'm not sure exactly how we're going to do it. But what I do know is the next time that Dawn or Dee Dee or Tasia call me and tell me that they can't sleep because they're having nightmares about Said Joaquin being murdered in his car, this failure to communicate is going to keep coming back to me. When I get an email from Christina and I keep hearing about how bad the community and how bad the environment is going to be. If these Gary Oaks are gone, I'm going to have a much more keen understanding about our failure to communicate. We're not asking you to do a miracle. We're not asking you to be God, Jesus, or anything Buddha, any of those things. All we're asking you to do is the bare minimum in communication. Understand what we're saying, comprehend what we're saying, and act on it. There's no reason Mike Wiley should still be riding the streets of Lakewood, patrolling anything. You've been involved with the death of two people who didn't have to die. With that said, Justice for Said Joaquin, all, all power to the people.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. Next, we have James Dunlop.
Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
My name is James Dunlop and I'm a Lakewood resident. I want to comment on the police shootings of Leonard Thomas and Said Joaquin. On May the 23rd, 2013, in Fife, Leonard Thomas was shot dead by police sniper Brown Market. The police operation was led by Michael Zarro and included Michael Wiley. All three police officers were on Lakewood's 2021 payroll. In 2017, the Seattle Times reported that a jury awarded the family of Leonard Thomas around $15 million, including $3 million against Michael Zarro, $2 million against Brown Market, and $1.5 million against Michael Wiley. In 2018, it was reported that the city of Lakewood had indemnified the police officers. And as I understand it, the eventual cost to the city after insurance coverage was $1 million. To me, it is extraordinary that an employer would keep an employee on the payroll after they had cost them or their insurers such huge amounts of money. This leads to Said Joaquin. On May the 1st, 2020, Michael Wiley shot him dead after a traffic stop. I've heard that the civil case doesn't start until December. The facts of Said's killing have been repeated over and over at these meetings. Yet on the surface, council members don't seem particularly perturbed. For example, on January the 10th of this year, the deputy mayor said how much she appreciated the talents of Michael Zarro, of Mike Zarro and Mike Wiley regarding the construction of some game apparatus. It is surely incredible that the deputy mayor and applauding council members acclaim individuals whose actions have been so costly to the city and its insurers. Hopefully, at the mayor's next community coffee house, we can discuss these issues. The people of Lakewood want to know if the city are setting aside for the possibility, are setting money aside for the possibility of a multimillion dollar payment to Said's family. They also want to know if the city's insurers will cover such a payment. Most importantly, the people and probably a future jury want to know why the city was so dismissive of the Leonard Thomas court decisions. Because if the city had taken them more seriously in terms of hiring and firing decisions, Said might still be alive. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Dunlop. The next is Otto with no last name, but sir, you're next.
My name is Otto Equitas. I'm the chairman of the Panther Party. I'm going to get through this as quickly as I can, but I got a lot to talk about. I'm going to try and do it without swearing because y'all piss me off. All right, so multiple people on this board applied and met the standards that you guys wanted. Scientific mindset in affected areas. And yet they're overlooked. But we got construction members on there. We got city planners on there. So what does it take to get on this committee exactly? How much money does it take to get on this committee exactly? Because we might be able to raise it for a couple of these guys. I just need to know a number. If one of y'all can give that to me, that would be great. All right, now they've already went on on that, so I'm going to move on. People are not judged by the color of their skin, but the content of their character. I thought that I had talked about y'all not quoting Dr. King because it just doesn't sound right coming from y'all's mouths. Black History Month, how are you guys touting Black History Month when you guys are killing black people in the streets? I wonder, Ms. Moss, do you get a bad taste in your mouth when you say these words knowing that your police chief has ordered these deaths? That Mike Wiley has committed these murders? Your HR director was talking about safety culture. Where is the safety for the people? Where in the city's culture does it show safety for the people that are walking down the damn street? There was a discussion around, oh, Mike Zarro is teaching a class on PTSD. That is laughable. How much PTSD do you think that the family of Said Joaquin has or Leonard Thomas? Mike Wiley was involved in both of their deaths. And y'all want to sit here and talk about PTSD? Are you joking? I got a couple more seconds, so I'm going to ask, y'all have been in office for about a month. Mr. Mayor, Madam Deputy Mayor, what is your gauge for success in this? Is it how much money you bring back to the city? Is it how much money you bring back to your pockets? Is it how much death there is in the street? And where is that barometer? Are you guys looking for more or less? Because at this point, I don't know what you guys' gauge for success is. And we wanted you guys to be successful. But now it seems like same different day. All power to the people.
Thank you, Mr. Sean Arant. You're next.
Hello. My name's Sean Arant. I'm a resident of Tacoma. I'd like to raise the issue of Clover Creek again, which originates out in Fredrickson and runs into Lake Silicon. A good portion of it runs through the city of Lakewood. This is a, this is a salmon-bearing stream. But unfortunately, it's been pretty horribly mistreated. So if you were to look at a map of Lakewood, you can see that all along the creek, there are houses just backed up to it. In some cases, people are mowing up to the creek. And, you know, this is, this is pretty bad for, for salmon habitat. I think, I think these things can be solved through education. But what can't be solved is that there is currently a lot for sale off of Pacific Highway Southwest, right next to I-5 that has mature tree canopy. And the creek runs through it. It's in pretty bad shape. There's probably an, a minute or two in there. It's, it's trashed, but I'm somebody that believes in stewardship. The city, along with partners in the county, I think has the ability to secure this site and restore it. On top of that, I mean, right across the street, there's, there's like a vacant gas station and an old church. Also creekside that I, I think one or two of them is for sale. The church would probably be easy to work with on restoration. So that, that there's an opportunity to restore a good stretch of creek there. Beyond that, I mean, this, this creek's been pretty horribly mistreated. It's, it runs under McCord Air Force Base. And then again, it runs under the majority of the city of Parkland. It, you know, it, it would take a lot of effort to daylight that, that creek. But it should be done because creeks are, are rare. They're not common and they're really vital habitats. They, you know, are the lifeblood of the Pacific Northwest. They bring in, you know, through salmon migration, they bring out nutrients from the ocean and bring them upstream, back inland. And you all have an obligation to protect them. I mean, there, there were treaties signed with very strides here about protecting their salmon runs. This one is not protected, but you have the opportunity to do that if you consider buying the site. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, Luna Starr.
Hi, my name's Luna Starr and I'm with the Black Panthers, but I also represent the community. I represent the Thomas family. I represent Said Joaquin's family. I represent Jesse Surray's family. My question for you guys now is, hold on just a second. My question for you guys now is since House Bill 2037, which allows police to use force when they can stop somebody who's fleeing from, from them or House Bill, there's three of them that we were against. Let me see. Sorry, I'm getting a little bit lost here, but there's three other ones that allow for cops to use force. They're allowed to stop them upon suspicion. And there's one where they're allowed to. Let's see here. Sorry, I'm going, I'm losing it. But my thing is since these bills have been stopped, these laws have been stopped. And I stand with these families who I've watched cops that you're hiding, that you're allowing to be back onto the streets, fight for those, those laws to not be passed. And now that they're being passed, my question is to you guys, especially you, Mary Moss, because I've actually shaken your hand and I believed in you. And I still do. I want to know how you guys are going to let the community know that now the people that you are hiding, the cops that you are hiding are have free will to go back out and do exactly what they did before. So how are you guys going to let the community know that they are not safe anymore once again? Are you guys going to let them know? Or, I mean, like, are we going to have a meeting? Are you guys going to do some events? Because now that we know these laws have been passed, I think the community should know too, so that the kids that you guys, you say love so much, that you guys are sitting here trying to keep in school, those black and indigenous kids. I want to know how you're going to keep them safe from the cops that you guys are hiding. Because if once something happens and another kid, something happens to another black person, then their blood is on your hands too. So I just want you to know that because we know it's been passed. So I want, I want to make sure you guys do too, so it's not one of your family members or somebody that you know. Because then you have to stand with us while we try to fight for your rights for your family too. So remember that when you look these cops in the face, you guys are about to let them do it again. And I want you to know that. That's all I have to say. All power to the people.
Those are all the hands raised that I see appearing for public comment tonight. Are there any others who wish to address council during the public comment period? Any others that we may have missed? Mr. Schumacher, any on the phone?
Mayor, I have no one else with their virtual hand raised this evening.
I don't see any others either, so I will declare the public comment period over. Before I turn to the consent agenda, I just want to make a comment on many of the comments we've heard tonight. I also just want to let the council, I think Ms. Moss, Deputy Mayor Moss and myself received probably 25 or 30 letters of interest and concern on the Said Joaquin matter and the investigation. And I just wanted to make it very, very clear that we hear you. But we also want to make sure expectations are also clear. The independent investigation is continuing to be reviewed by the Pierce County Prosecutor's Office. That is part and parcel to the law, the legislation, which was the passage of I-940 and ultimately ended up being the, the law which we now have to follow, which is the Law Enforcement Training and Community Safety Act. As part and parcel of that act, the implementing rules include the Washington Administrative Code 139-12-030. It sets forth the criteria for independent investigation. It states, and I read under section sub 1, sub A, that independence is essential to the integrity and objectivity of the investigation. Maintaining independence is achieved through compliance with rules and regulations designed to prohibit undue influence and the appearance of undue influence by the agency involved in the investigation. So we hear the comments and we understand the concerns of this community. But Lakewood must abide by the process set forth by state law. So we thank you for your comment tonight. We will now turn Madam Clerk to the consent agenda.
A, thank you. A, approval of the minutes of the city council study session of January 10th, 2022. B, approval of the minutes of the city council meeting, January 18th, 2022. C, approval of claims vouchers in the amount of $3,242,290.07 for the period of December 18th, 2021 through January 14th, 2022. D, approval of payroll checks in the amount of $2,649,239.94 for the period of December 16th, 2021 through January 15th, 2022. E, motion number 2022-07, authorizing the execution of an agreement with P C R A in the amount of $386,350 for design permit and construction management for Phase One improvements at Woods Lake Park. F, motion number 2022-08, approving a state of Washington pollution liability insurance agency environmental covenant granted to Swan Properties Corporation in the city of Lakewood. G, motion number 2022-09, appointing Emily Thellin to serve on the Lakewood Parks Commission through October 16th, 2024. H, motion number 2022-10, appointing Linda Smith to serve on the Greater Tacoma Regional Convention Center Public Facilities District Board through December 31st, 2023. I, items filed in the Office of the City Clerk. One, Community Services Advisory Board minutes of May 19th, 2021. Two, Landmarks and Heritage Advisory Board minutes of October 28th, 2021. Three, Planning Commission meeting minutes of January 5th, 2022.
Thank you. Is there any item which any council member wishes to remove from the consent agenda at this time? If not, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
So moved. Second.
It's been moved by Councilmember Farmer and seconded by Councilmember Bell that we adopt the consent agenda as presented. Is there any further discussion? If not, all those in favor of adoption of the consent agenda as presented signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any others? The consent agenda has been adopted. We now move to the regular agenda, unfinished business. Mr. Caulfield, is there any unfinished business to attend to tonight?
There is none, Mayor.
How about any new business?
There is, Mayor, and perhaps have the.
I believe we have the one item that the clerk will read. Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion number 2022-11, approving appointments to the tree advisory ad hoc committee.
Thank you. And I believe for this particular one, I'd like to call on Mr. Buwer as well as either Councilmember Farmer or Councilmember Bokey to lead the council through the process by which the subcommittee chewed over the applicant, not chewed over, but you know, ruminated over and considered the qualifications and came to the, the selection process that we have before us today. First, Mr. Buwer, and then I'll follow it up with the council members.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. Previously, the council adopted a resolution defining a process to appoint members to the steering committee. Excuse me, to the ad hoc committee. From that basis, the, there were three members of the city council who reviewed the applications. And with what you And uh, what you have in your agenda bill are the recommendations of those three city council members taken collectively. That really ends my presentation. Uh, Mr. Mayor, this is really a decision for a council.
Thank you, and before I ask for a motion approving the appointment. Any members of the subcommittee wish to discuss? A little bit of the process or the, the review. The, the one thing that. I didn't have handy under the thirteen or twelve, excuse me, eleven recommended appointees is where they fell within the. The categories that we were hoping to fill to round out the, the expertise and invoices on the subcommittee or the ad hoc committee. Anybody want to speak to that, Mr. Bokey or Ms. Farmer or Mr. Anderson?
Sure, I'll. You want to start, Don, or do you want me to go?
You may as well go, I don't.
Okay, so after you.
I don't have him in cat, in categories at this point. I know we were talking about spreading them apart as we went along, so.
Right, I, and I, I've got a little bit of that. Uh, we met Monday night and, and went through the category or went through all the individuals. Remember now that. There were thirty-six, there were thirty-six applications after taking out duplicates, so. And it's a thirteen-member board, so only about one-third of the folks are, are gonna get picked anyway, right? And so, um, and also keep in mind the council's desire was to have, you know, two people knowledgeable. Uh, environment, two from the development community, one from homeowners association, neighborhood association. One from the youth council and two from CDBD eligible zones. So that right off the bat is eight people that either qualified or didn't. Um, and uh, so that again leaves a large group of people who um. Don't necessarily qualify, but are only really uh working from those five positions. So we went through the list and um, came up and there are actually two individuals who have businesses. In the CDBG eligible zone on this list. But we felt like we needed a, a better uh representation from those CDBL eligible zones. Um, I don't know that we realized at the time is, was Wagner was on there and I, and I should have known that. Um, there are um. There is a member of Tacoma Audubon on there. I believe there are several members who are part of the Gary Oaks Conservancy. Mr. Jones is on the youth council. I'm not sure who our homeowners association person was. Mr. Boatman from the seat, the Clover Park School District is on there. Uh, the feeling was that uh. Clover Park School District is probably the largest landowner in the city. And is also, uh, has a number of uh trees on those properties and in some cases Gary Oaks. Um, and they were invited uh to be participants either on that uh committee. Or on the board, and I believe Mr. Boatman is their um. Their uh facilities person. Um, Jesse Gamble uh is a member of the Master Builders. Sean Martin works for the Realtors. Um, Ms. Ellers is on our multicultural coalition. She's also. A uh resident of the Oakbrook Community. Uh, Mr. Billingsley is uh heavily engaged in our parks. He's also heavily engaged in um. The game farm and the restoration of the game farm, which has been an area where. Uh, there has been a number of plantings of oaks. Mr. Glassdeter is uh, is works, actually works in and brings his expertise in removal of trees. Uh, Maya Naff is with Lake Ball Gardens. I believe Ms. Melissa Jackson with the Homer Audubon. Uh, Mr. Brooks is, is in the construction business or has been uh for long, and he's a longtime Lakewood uh person. And he also uh lives near, I believe, Lake Stillicum and has been involved in that community. Antique Mayor Dunlap. Who has called in a number of times with concerns about the uh, the Gary Oaks and actually several members remembered that he. Actually spoke to the council a number of years ago at our, I believe, twentieth anniversary. When we had an essay contest and he was uh, as part of that and, and read that and, and several members. Uh, remembered that, so, you know, I think we did the best we could at trying to uh balance this out. Uh, given a, a lot of really good applications. I mean, there are really some, some very fine people. Uh, that uh, for, you know, based on trying to get this balanced, based upon the council's request. That we uh, certain positions that we have to fill with certain folks and um. Again, we've, we've gone out and we're looking for, uh, we have a lead on a, a really strong person in Springbrook. Uh, which is, which is a major part of this a-actually going forward, and you, you heard that tonight when they talked about. Not just preservation of trees, but the preservation of Clover Creek, so um. Which is part and parcel with the preservation of the trees, so we're looking uh, for those folks. There, there's also the Tillicum Woodbrook neighborhood. Um, there's are some significant stands. Of um trees in those areas and those are underrepresented areas, and so that's. Where our search has gone for the last, the final two members, so that's what I got.
Any other comment, comments by members of the council subcommittee?
Yeah, I just note that what we're looking for as a committee isn't a group to make a decision. The council is ultimately responsible for that, and we've got a planning commission that, that may be involved. What we're looking for is a breadth of ideas and people who are willing to come to the table and discuss those and come up with uh solutions and options. Uh, it's, uh, it's not searching for the loudest voice. It's searching for. Uh, in, informed people who have different viewpoints, who can offer. Uh, a, a kind of a men, a menu of options so that we can do the balancing that's so difficult, so. I, I think we've been, collectively, we, we, we tried to do that. Uh, I think we still have a piece of that puzzle left on those uh underrepresented areas of the city, and that's why we left two spots open.
Very good. Any, anything else for the good of the order on this?
I'll chime in. This was a very difficult process. Um, because as it has been mentioned, we did have such excellent applicants, excuse me. Um, and we were looking for a diversity of experience, um, diversity in age, diversity in gender. Um, we were looking for that breadth of, of thought and action uh to, to help inform a decision for the council. So it, it was very hard.
Well, thanks to the three of you for working through that process. Uh, you know, I did review all the thirty-eight or nine applications. There were a few duplicates in there, and I was, uh, I was impressed with the. The interest, number one, the aptitude and professionalism of the applications. I was quite impressed with the. The numbers of folks who are well qualified to serve, and I, I think you've done a fine job. Process question, if we uh have a motion seconded to adopt. The eleven designated appointments, what do we do for the other two, Mr. Buwer? Do we ultimately get those in the next council meeting? Do we have enough time? When do you guys plan to meet for the first time with the whole group? With the ad hoc committee?
It's dependent upon when the full committee is formed and constituted. My assumption is, is that this would come back at your next regular meeting and the two, two positions would be filled.
At that time.
At that time, and then thereafter, we would begin the process of holding meetings. I am anticipating the first meeting would be in March, sometime in March, depending upon the council's action with these two. Two positions that have not been recommended to be filled yet.
Uh, my question to the council subcommittee, when do we think we'll have these two identified? Cause I'm looking, our next uh regular session would be on the twenty-first, so I assume it's in the next week.
I, I would suggest that we, we take that time to uh look for those two applicants from the designated census tracts. And uh, if we. I haven't discussed this with the other members of the committee. If we don't do it by then, that we move forward with. A suggestion to appoint people out of the existing applicants. That gives us another two weeks to come up with somebody.
Yeah, we're pursuing some pretty strong leads in those two, in the Springbrook, uh Woodbrook and Tillicum areas, and so we should. We should come to some sort of resolution by the next council, regular council meeting.
Great, okay. Well, um, do I have a motion to adopt motion twenty twenty-two dash eleven? As presented.
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Councilmember Anderson, seconded by Councilmember Farmer, that we uh approve uh. Motion number twenty twenty-two dash eleven, which approves appointments of the eleven. Individuals listed on page one hundred and twenty-four of our packet. Is there any further discussion on the appointments, Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh. I am concerned that Mr. Bokey and his comments and. And none of the other members of the committee were able to. Identify by name which of the eleven recommended people. Fill the. Homeowners or Neighborhood Association. Item in the framework, uh, and that they were not, nor the specific names of the folks. Who were folks with environmental expertise or interest, although I suspect that on that one. There are some people, but I would like to be able to consciously say. We filled the eight, in this list, the six with two we know we're not filling. Uh, to say, these were the names that filled those positions, and then there are five at-large positions. That were intended to round out the, to be, to be able to go and do that. So not having that piece of clarity. I would move to continue uh this resolution to the meeting of February twenty-first.
Uh, okay, let me, parliamentarian, do we, we have to. Take the motion on the table before Mr. Branstadter's motion to table, and I know Mr. Anderson has a comment. Maybe it might address Mr. Branstadter's question.
I, I will defer to a council member always.
Oh, well, I, I had another comment, but if, if there's a second, if, is that there, if there's a second, you go for it with the.
Right.
Spin made.
Yeah.
But if, only if there's a second.
Mr. Branstadter, uh, let me see if there's a second to your motion, or perhaps we wait till Mr. Anderson addresses your question. Is there a motion second to Mr. Branstadter's motion to table consideration of this motion till the twenty-first?
I'll second the motion for conversation purposes.
Okay, is there any further discussion? It's been moved by Mr. Branstadter, seconded by Mrs. Farmer, that we. Continue consideration of this motion to February twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. Anderson.
Yes, uh, you can tell who has environmental experience by reading the resumes. And there are any number of people who, uh, depending on how you define that, have that type of experience. Either people with horticulture experience, people with environmental interests, people who by virtue of their undergraduate education. Or uh, the associations or clubs they belong to, uh, like the Audubon Society, I would consider somebody with an environmental interest. Um, so there are any number of people fall in that category. Uh, with respect to the homeowners association, uh. I don't know if somebody is a member of the, you know, get, Gaslight Homeowners Association or not. I do know that Mr. Ed Brooks has been an active member in Lake Stillicum Association, which would qualify just as much as any other community association. So technically, I think we have the box checked for the homeowners association. I'd like to see somebody from the. The, you know, the Springbrook uh, the group out there or something, but uh, we, we may, or Tillicum group, but we, and we may get that. The other point is that people can fill more than one box. Somebody can be um, both, you know, A and B. Uh, it doesn't have to be. I, I don't read the resolution, creating this as requiring unique individuals for each spot. Uh, somebody may be a biologist or a, a botanist who lives in a census tract and. Check two boxes, so I don't think it's necessary, and I'm concerned with respect to the motion to table that. Um, we get bogged down in process and we don't get moving and that people want us to get moving on this. It's gonna take long enough as it is to properly consider it. Uh, well, I, I think the perception of, of progress is as important as. Progress itself sometimes.
Thank you. Mr. Branstadter?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, uh, I think that um, having adopted a framework. Uh, that uh transparency indicates that we would be able to. Say, within that framework, who was selected to meet the one where there was a requirement. Other, for the other than the in-large things. And secondly. Mr. Buwer's comments this evening are that he isn't going to be able to form the committee. Until the last two members are either selected or it's determined that they cannot be found. Which would not happen before the twenty-first in any event. And thus, uh, continuing this action to February twenty-first is. Going to happen because we have two vacancies, in any case. We're not going to be able to form a committee without some action on the twenty-first, and it would be, in my view, better to. Do it all at the same time and appoint the entire committee and then give the consultant uh and staff. And the members of the committee that, the go-ahead to begin their work. Uh, and appointing eleven today and then waiting to appoint two more doesn't gain us any time.
Thank you. Any further discussion on the motion to table to a date certain, February twenty-one, Ms. Walker?
I just wanted to be specific, what you actually have um going is a postponement to a date certain. Under Roberts rules.
So it's a motion to postpone consideration of motion twenty twenty-two dash eleven to a date certain, that being February twenty-first. Thank you. Any further discussion on that motion, which is before us? If not, all those in favor of the motion to continue consideration to February twenty-one, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay. Nay.
Nay.
Mr. Mayor, you should do a roll, roll call, to be specific.
Okay.
Like that, just for the minutes. Thank you.
Very good. Okay, we'll call. I, I thought I heard at least four nays and one yea, but we can do a roll call though. Let's go ahead, Ms. Schumacher. And, and conduct a roll call vote on the motion to continue consideration of motion twenty twenty-two dash eleven to February twenty-one.
Farmer.
Nay.
Moss. Anderson.
Nay.
Bell.
Nay.
Bokey.
Nay.
Branstadter.
Aye.
And Mayor Willen.
Nay.
Motion fails.
Very good, so we're back to the motion on the table, which is motion twenty twenty-two dash eleven with the. Eleven recommended appointees. Is there any further discussion on the motion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Aye, any opposed? Motion twenty twenty-two dash eleven is adopted. That concludes uh, the business under the new business segment of tonight's meeting. We now move to reports by the city manager, Mr. Caulfield.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor Whelan, Deputy Mayor. Moss and council members. Just a handful of updates this evening, if I may. Uh, we were contacted by the local executive director of the Red Cross here in the South Sound, asking if this body would be willing to. Uh, consider a proclamation recognizing March as Red Cross Month. And um, if so, uh, they have provided a draft proclamation, and if the council wishes to move forward with this, my recommendation would. Be that this be included as part of your um, March seventh um, agenda. So um. Mayor, maybe when I'm done or under council comments, you could help me with that. Um, want to congratulate uh, Mary Dodsworth and her team in recreation for securing a hundred and forty-five thousand dollars uh, SEEK grants, which is summer experiences and enrichment for kids. Uh, funding source through Association of Washington Cities. Uh, the funds will be used this summer for outdoor programs serving children in K through twelve. And uh, it's a, it's a, it's a great opportunity to expand our, our existing um, youth programs that we have here in the city, both provided by the city and of course with a. With a number of partners. Would also like to point out that um, Ms. Dodsworth and her team's application was um. Recognized very positively by uh, AWC as well as uh, WRPA, which is the uh, Washington Recreation and Parks Association and then OSPI. So uh, fantastic work there by Ms. Dodsworth and her team. Um, also, the program will be eight weeks long. And um, it'll serve forty kids uh, per, per, per week. Um, in addition, Ms. Dodsworth and her team were able to secure a twenty thousand dollar grant from the state historic uh, preservation fund. To help partially finance um, a cemetery fence, a new cemetery fence at Fort Stillicum Park. Uh, the overall cost is fifty thousand, but certainly um, securing twenty thousand from the state is a step. In in the right direction, and uh, it is likely will be coming back as part of a future budget process uh, to provide. To recommend providing the additional monies to be able to undertake that project in the next couple of years. Um, also as part of uh, the city's um. Initiative to expand its adopt a street program to incorporate a graffiti removal component of which. Ms. Dodsworth will be talking with this body probably in March or April about, one of the things that we're going to be doing is working with WCIA to try and. Uh, secure a twelve thousand dollar grant uh, to purchase a sand blaster, which will assist with um. Some of the removal of some of the graffiti that we have, have around, have, have around town, have around town. Um, also, a couple of initiatives that this body has um, directed that we move forward in two thousand and twenty-one. Uh, we're going to get up and going. One is uh, park signs. If you recall, last year, um, the council asked us to kind of go back to the drawing board. Um, after uh, tabling the, the Park and Recreation Advisory Board's recommendation on park signage. So we're in the process of um, pulling together a team, including some outside assistance to develop a scope. However, before we get too far down the road on that, um, we are going to come back to this body. And have a discussion with you regarding the s- the scope of the services to make sure that what we're doing is in line with what your expectations are there. Um, meanwhile, we have put on pause um, a couple of new uh, park signs, uh, particularly the one at Fort Stillicum Park down at Angle Lane. I know there's a. There's a couple of others as well, but more to follow on that here later this spring. Um, in addition, another initiative that we'd like to get completed by the end of this year is um, an update to our non-motorized plan. And uh, actually, the Public Works Engineering Direct, Engineering Department did get underway with that last year and even a little bit in in two thousand and twenty. Um, however, some additional resources are going to be needed to to complete that, and um, again, as part of our future uh, budget process here in the spring. Um, it is likely we'll be requesting some additional monies to be able to uh, complete that work, but also as a part of that, to be able to share with the council the work that we have completed in the last um. Year, year, year and a half. Um, we were in uh, conversations last week, or it was the week before, with uh, Pierce County regarding. The reopening of our senior activity center at their uh, county-owned building on Lakewood Drive. Um, one of the things that they communicated to us is um, they're in in the process of undertaking uh, an evaluation. Of the overall condition of of the building and to try and put a pencil to that in terms of what the costs are associated with. Addressing some of the deficits, both from a maintenance standpoint and a capital standpoint um, in that, in that building. Um, what that means is that they put a temporary pause on. Coming to an agreement on um, a lease agreement for us to be able to reopen our, our senior activity center. Um, we're still optimistic that we'll be able to do that in 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 March, but again, just wanted to uh, give you a courtesy um, heads up that that is um. Kind of on pause for at least a, a three or four weeks, but again, we hope to be back in front of you in 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 March. Um, also, um, another initiative uh, that we're kicking off here in uh, actually, right now, we're kicking it off, however. Uh, before we get too far down the road, in in early March, the uh, Public Works Engineering Director Paul Bucic. Um, is going to come before you and give you a little bit more of an update, and that is as it relates to the Clover Creek Flood Mitigation Alternative Study. And you might recall, this is an outcome of our work in evaluating the new floodplain in that area that FEMA provided in two thousand um, nineteen. And uh, so uh, this body appropriated uh, some funds in a contract uh, late last year for us to move forward with uh, with this work. Uh, right now, we're in the process of undertaking two components of that. The first is the establishment of a stakeholders group of um, a number of uh, government agencies and the like. Uh, to assist us with uh, the development of the plan and evaluating um, and evaluating um, alternatives and auctions. Uh, to date, uh, we have WashDOT, given the impact on I five, also uh, the State Department of Fish and Wildlife. Um, both the Pierce County uh, Stormwater Department, as well as the Pierce County Flood Control Zone District. Both the Pualup and the Nisqually Indian Tribes, Pierce Transit and uh, JBLM. Um, the last other two government agencies that we're waiting for is uh, the Department State, the State Department of Ecology and in 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 Sound Transit. Um, and then on a parallel track, we'll be developing a public engagement plan. Um, to outreach to all the folks that either own or live along um, the, the, the Clover Creek um, here, here in Lakewood. So. But again, before we get too far down the road on that, Mr. Bucic and his team will be in front of you just to give you an update on that. Um, and we're looking at doing that sometime in March. I think your second regular meeting in March is what we're, what we're looking at. So more to come, more to come on that. Um, and then um, lastly, just from a calendaring standpoint, um, as uh. As Mr. Hank Jones mentioned in the Youth Council Report today, the um. Caring for Kids is having their um, uh, happy auction event, Caring for Kids Happy Auction Event. It's at the McGavick Center on Saturday night. Um, it's from uh, begins at five PM, five to eight, eight thirty is usually when it goes. Um, it's not going to be the full complement. This is probably one of the. Most well-attended events um, in the city. I mean, it literally packs the McGavick Center. Uh, with tables all close in and such. Um, however, because of COVID, um, they'll be a little bit much more spread out. And I was talking to Diane Formosa a couple of weeks ago about this. Um, but if you're interested in attending, please do give Diane a call. Uh, for, 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 for tickets. Um, it's always a worthwhile event to, to attend, and she does great work here in our. In our community as well as others in the surrounding area in support of our children. So with that, Mayor, that's, that's my report.
Thank you, Mr. Caulfield. Uh, and again, before I turn this over to council for questions on your comments, I just want to thank you for the. Uh, the AWC presentation tonight and the Well City Award in terms of not only healthy employees. Returning home to their families, but also a reduction in some of the premiums paid as a result of that fine work. So thank you and your staff for that.
Thank you, Mayor, and you know, the, the credit goes to, it starts with Mary McDougal and Kat St. Pierre. They're the ones who are really leading that initiative, and then of course, our department directors and. The regular ongoing communications that they, that they, that they have. So. But tha- thank you for that. I will be sure to pass that on there.
Mr. Branstadter, you have a question?
Um, yes, Mr. Mayor, and Mr. Caulfield, uh, I was curious why on the Clover Creek Blood Mitigation. Uh, group that we're seeking to have stakeholders that the uh. Uh, Water Resource Inventory Area, which is the Chambers Clover Creek. Uh, folks, uh, watershed council isn't. One of the stakeholders that we were considering as having a part of our group. Since they're very focused on that, the.
Uh, Councilmember Branstadter, let me get back to you on that. Um, it could be that. A, a number of folks that are part of that council are actually represented through some of these other agencies that I already listed.
Is that it, Mr. Branstadter? Okay, Mr. Anderson.
Hey, yeah, John, when you were going through the litany of uh. Uh, it, it interested parties on that Clover Creek issue, uh, did you mention Washington State Department of Fisheries?
I I did, Councilmember Anderson.
Got it, because they're a co-manager, so. Thanks.
Councilmember Farmer.
Mr. City Manager, per the proclamation that you mentioned at the, the beginning of your notes. Um, what other proclamations do we have on deck for March?
Uh, Councilmember Farmer, at your March twenty-one regular meeting, uh, the council's asked for a proclamation commemorating Lakeview Light and Power's centennial.
Do we typically do one um, celebrating March as Women's History Month?
I would have to go back and check Councilmember Farmer.
Okay, thank you.
But if that's one that you would like us to pursue or this body.
I would.
I think.
Thank you.
Just get a nod from the body and we can move forward with that.
That looks good. That'd be great. Mr. Bokey, so that'll be on board, Mr. Caulfield, thank you. Thank you, Ms. Farmer. Mr. Mr. Bokey.
Yeah, staying on the theme of Clover Creek, and I was, I was going to mention it later in my remarks, we got a call, we, one of our. In the public comment today was uh. Was somebody mentioned a, a property that might be able to be purchased, maybe a straw land along the creek. So I'd like us to investigate that as, and and those kind of things sometimes are eligible for grants and whatnot, but. Sometimes we have to nail those down, right? And and uh. I, I think the tribe would be interested in preservation of properties along the creek. I think that we could give conservation futures dollars if there was. If there was some ecological value to saving that. So uh, for the individual who called in, I, 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 I thank him for. Making us aware of that. I, I don't know where that is, but I would appreciate it if staff looked into it.
If, if that's the case, this will probably come up as part of the evaluation of, of, of this set, of this study, Councilmember Bokey.
Anyone else? Questions for Mr. Caulfield? Well, great. If not, then we'll go ahead and turn to uh, council comments, and I'll start tonight with Councilmember Bell.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Um, well, tonight I was able to attend the Arts Commission meeting, which was great, and the big highlight is the Real Life Ninety-Six. Which the gala starts will be on March nineteenth at the McGavick Center. And they had their orientation for their teams, which I believe were thirty-six teams, and they get started this week. Um, and their taping time deadlines are from this uh, February tenth to the fourteenth. So the committee was very excited about it, encourage everyone to go to the gala, which will be again on March nineteenth at the McGavick Center. That's it for me.
Well, great. I look forward to that as one of the judges. Uh, it should be a fantastic event, and I think we'll get a, a great turnout because the thirty, what, thirty-six or thirty, thirty-seven teams?
Yeah, thirty-six teams, and they have, and I think maybe a couple per team or more.
Yeah, it's at least a couple hundred people involved in that, Mr. Caulfield.
Yeah, okay. So it's exciting, yeah.
Really, really great.
Great turnout.
Really great, and the, the exciting thing is it's really something that. Came up from the Arts Commission. It was their idea. They kind of went for it, put this whole thing on, and it's fabulous. So that's great. Uh, Councilmember Farmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I wanted to also send my kudos to staff for the Well City Award and the, the retro payment, having worked for several cities where. Um, where this work has been needed to be done uh, by staff. It does take an incredible amount of work, and I just really wanted to, to send kudos to staff for. For all of that, all of that hard work. It doesn't, it doesn't just happen. So thank you for that. Um, I'm a member of the South Sound Housing Affordability Partners, and we are really close to hiring a manager for the group. We are uh, in the process of scheduling meet and greets with uh, with candidates, and so hopefully by our next meeting, I'll have more, more updates. I wanted to thank Mayor Whelan for sitting in for me last week on a subcommittee work with the initial work plan. And we have a second meeting this Wednesday to, to hopefully put some final touches on our, on our proposed work plan for the year. Um, and I also sit on the sex, the state sex offender policy board, and we are starting up our regular meeting schedule on March thirty-first, and the agenda is still. Uh, to be continued. And that's it for me.
Great. A quick question for you. Might sit in on that meeting with Shape on Wednesday as well, or do you need me or no on that one?
Um, if you can make it, great. Um, they were hoping to have you for continuity sake, since you were on, on last week's, but I was unclear from your email if you could make it, so.
Got it, okay. I will double check and get back with you. Thank you, though.
Okay, thanks.
Uh huh. Councilmember Bokey.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Uh, just uh, we had, I sat in on the uh, Planning Commission meeting uh, last Wednesday night. Where they went through the Housing Action Plan and the Review of Lakewood Housing Programs, and uh. It was, it was, Mr. Buwer put that together or, and uh. It was, it was very well done, very informative, and uh, I think was very helpful, was helpful to me, but I think it was very helpful to the. To the Planning Commission also to kind of give them a. A, a level of, a, a good level of knowledge about the housing situation. In the city of Lakewood, and uh. I look forward to see how, how that will come together, and I think at some point in time, we'll, we'll also see it and uh. Um, loo- looking forward to that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Great, thank you. Uh, Mr. Branstadter.
Yeah, same, Mr. Mayor. Um. And yet, on Thursday, I went by the, the city hall and I uh. Looked in on the uh, the Thursday morning uh, event that was put on by the Tacoma Probono. Folks that we're funding for them to help folks with the uh, eviction prevention and free legal help with that regard. Uh, the gentleman there, they're uh, looking to be there from nine to twelve every Thursday uh, going forward. Uh, they take uh, either people by appointment or they accept walk-ins. Uh, haven't seen a. Lot of people yet, but that um, it, it may be that if we use some of the cities, the. The promotional tools, the social media, uh, or uh, reach out through our uh, rental housing safety program, we may get. More participation, and this is a, an ARPA-funded activity that we have, as a council approved. And then I'd also like to comment on the, on, on the Real Ninety-Six uh, potential. I went to the orientation for all the teams on Saturday. Uh, that uh. The, the teams were all represented, if not all the team members. Uh, there was a lot of enthusiasm uh, there, and it was a mix of folks. That had never done anything like this and folks that uh, had participated in events like this competitively. And uh, I came away with the. With the. Really, two great impressions. One was that uh, for the first annual. Event of this sort, uh, it uh. Is going forward with a great deal of enthusiasm and looking at it, and it's certainly setting the stage for this to become a recurring. Event to do that. And I was also uh, impressed by the comments from. Some of the folks who were there receiving the orientation, who indicated that they had participated in like events elsewhere. Uh, and who were very. and who were very complimentary of our staff and of the Arts Commission representatives and folks that were there of saying, you know, how this was far more organized. And it is some other piece of work that is, represents the, that we're going to do something at the city of Lakewood that we strive to do it well, and I think that we're, we, we sort of set that expectation in the same way that we have with the Farmer's Market and other, other things that we've taken on. And and I was glad to see the video from, from Okinawa City to be able to go and do that. You know, I got a little pin that's a drummer that's dressed exactly like the folks that were on the, on the, on the, on the video to do that, and I think that's another indication of, just like even during the pandemic, our relationship with GMA and our relationship with Okinawa, and particularly with the, and with long in the Philippines, you know, haven't just wilted, but they've been working to keep them, keep them going, and some, that's, that's a good thing to, to go on and have those relationships. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Well, thank you very much. You know, it was a great video. I was a little concerned. We might be merging right into the 21st anniversary of the relationship. Mr. Anderson.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments on status of some legislation in Olympia on police practices. Our two bills live in with respect to pursuit and another one with respect to probable cause. They, they, they deal with pursuit and prob, or use of force, excuse me. Probable cause would become the less of a factor, go back to reasonable suspicion on certain offenses. So you could go after a stolen car again. That's essentially what that would do. Use of force, there are a couple of clarifying bills that are no brainers, like being able to put hands on someone with a, a, a behavioral health issue so that you can get them into treatment. Right now, that's without a warrant, that can't be done. And you can use a 50 caliber beanbag as a non-lethal force. So that, those, those two seem to be going through. It's up in the air whether the pursuit bill and the, and the use of force modification will, will make it. There's a fallback bill that combines the two in the Senate. Those are House bills, and the Senate bill is doesn't, doesn't retract as much as the House bills do. So more to follow on that. So we'll see. That's all.
Great, thank you. And then Deputy Mayor Moss.
I attended a Lakewood Promise Board meeting last week, and I'm really excited about the youth summit. They had some good suggestions and ideas, so I'm looking forward to getting the report from the next meeting, so that'll be exciting. They had new offices elected, and Eliu remained the chair, and Jewish Love Day will continue as vice chair for at least one more year. And on Wednesday, I attended them, I will be attending the Monica King meeting as we prepare for the next year, getting the early start on that. We'll be attending the Airman Leadership Graduation and JBLM on McCordfield. Also on Thursday, I will be attending the Lake City Neighborhood Association meeting. And I do plan to attend the Chamber Luncheon on Thursday. And I just wanted you guys, if you haven't, to stop by Crumble Cookies. If you can get through the line, good luck. But my understanding is that they are absolutely delicious. I haven't had a chance to taste them, but the lines said they were great. So, thank you, Mr. Mayor.
You did marry. You, we had them at the, at the bridge.
Oh, those were those cookies?
Yeah.
Yeah, I can agree. They are absolutely delicious.
You raved about them, as did everybody who was eating them. Sorry to interrupt.
Coalition, thank you. That's it.
Oh, well, thank you. Thank you very much. I, I have a few comments here. It's been, shall we say, a busy couple of weeks. Frenetically busy, as a matter of fact. I just wanted to comment again, just briefly on much of the public comment tonight, and just to reiterate that I think Deputy Mayor Moss and myself, we received probably 25 or 30 written submissions to us, also addressed to Pierce County Prosecutor Mary Robnett, expressing concerns about the delay with the Said Joe Quinn case. And I just want to reiterate, as I did at the end of public comment tonight, that the city of Lakewood will abide by the process because independence is the, the key, and I think we all understand what the law requires. So that doesn't diminish the concerns expressed by folks. It's just we have to set the expectation that we have to follow the process, and I think we're all on board with that. In terms of public safety issues, Mr. Anderson mentioned some legislation pending. I had a chance to go down, well, go down on Zoom and testify before the Senate Subcommittee involved with Senate Bill 5919 that did address certain issues with regard to use of force and the rules for engagement for pursuits. I was able to listen to mayors from around the state testify in that Senate Subcommittee that expressed concerns over the unintended consequences of last year's changes to the law in that, that they have all seen consistently around their various jurisdictions, increases, significant increases in crime in various categories, and they're very concerned about that. And so there is hope that these, these bills making it through will alter the course and some of those unintended consequences and bring back an increased sense of accountability. Speaking of some accountability, I attended on the 26th an event downtown Tacoma that was an opportunity for business folks to get together and chat with their elected leaders downtown as well as the police department. There were over 400 business leaders downtown expressing concerns in Tacoma, not Lakewood, but in Tacoma about the state of public safety issues in the downtown core. The theme that ran through much of the conversation was that, you know, more needs to be done. And the, the police department there needs to be brought up to full strength so they can do the work that they know they need to do to make the community feel more safe in a transparent way, consistent with the good changes that were made with the state legislative changes to policing last year. From our own public safety standpoint, I would encourage all of you, if you haven't had the chance to do it, to do a ride along. I did a ride along with Officer Stephen Moffett last week. It was on the 28th, the Friday, and that was after a sequence of events. I, I went from 8:00 PM till 2:00 AM, so I did the full six-hour shift after my full day at work. So it was about a 20, 22-hour day for me. But I, here's what I observed. We observed, we did observe an elude where we came across, across a stolen vehicle, and the officers went up to the vehicle to tap on because the vehicle was running, and the occupant appeared to be sleeping or just not fully awake. And as soon as the occupant had their window tapped on, they roared out, and our officers could have been badly injured had they been positioned differently, but they're professional and they know what they're doing. But that was an example where we can't pursue. It was amazing just to see it with my own eyes. We also had the chance to observe a couple of, you know, really crazy accidents involving either inattentive drivers or a drunk driver won a case. And there, in both instances, the officers were incredibly professional coming on the scene and dealing with not only the driver, but the victims. In one case, there were two young children in the vehicle, and one of the kids got kind of bunged up, unfortunately. And that was a vehicle that went through, yet again, our Lakewood sign at Bridgeport and South Tacoma Way. So, you know, it was, it was crazy to actually come across yet another goalpost bender of a vehicle going right through the center of the, the sign. And we had an occasion to go to a couple DV calls and just observing how calm and professional the demeanor of our officers were with members of the public in times of distress. It was, it was really good to observe and heartwarming because, you know, I don't know if I would have been as professional or as calm in my own demeanor, but they did a good job. And so we saw a panoply of stuff in just one night. It's amazing. The city manager gives us a kind of a a blog report at the end of his, his manager's weekly update that gives you a whole bunch of events that go on. And I tell you, it is interesting, if not astonishing, the amount of stuff that goes on that our officers have to deal with on a daily basis. So again, if you haven't done a ride along, I highly recommend it. It was very good, very illuminating, and I think appreciated by the officer. So in terms of other things, as Councilmember Farmer indicated, I attended the SHAPE Planning Group meeting. That was a good meeting, a good, you know, two, two and a half hours of time. On the 26th, I had lunch with the Garrison Commander Phil Lamb along with the city manager. We talked about issues of mutual concern to kind of strengthen our relationship with, with JBLM. It was a good opportunity. On the 27th, we had our first coffee house, community coffee house with the mayor. That's the evening event. We're trying to transition from the morning event just to see if we can gain better participation, and I think it will come along and it will grow hopefully over time. And again, the hope is to create dialogue with people. I think one gentleman tonight indicated that we can do a better job of communicating, and the hope with these kinds of events is to allow those opportunities to be better, so we can have some dialogue, and maybe community and public safety can be one of those meetings down the road soon. So that should be good. On the 29th, the Saturday, I looked at a site visit at the request of a developer who was looking to do 60 units of apartments along Lake, Lakewood Drive. Should be a great project. He's going through the process right now, but it will include, at least as planned, we'll see what happens with the permitting process. Another six units of low and very low affordable housing, low-income affordable housing, which is another opportunity to utilize the density bonus in the city. So again, we'll see how it all comes out, but that's a hopeful sign. I mentioned my testimony on the Senate Subcommittee on February 1st. I had another lunch meeting this time with the 22 Striker Brigade Commander and Mr. Cofield on the 4th of February, again, trying to strengthen the relationships with the new, with the new command. So that was a good event. And then a bunch of other stuff. It's just been a crazy couple of weeks. I do want to, in light of our work in strengthening relationships with Joint Base Los McCord, to give a shout out to Councilmember Don Anderson, our former mayor. He was inducted to the JBLM Civilian Hall of Fame this last week on Friday, the 28th of January. Our own Don Anderson was inducted to the Hall of Fame and was awarded the Lieutenant General William Harrison Service Award. This recognition includes his role as mayor and deputy mayor in establishing the South Sound Military and Community Partnership, as well as his leadership as the city's mayor undertaking, as we all know, any number of initiatives to include advocacy at the federal and state level in support of JBLM, addressing the North Clear Zone encroachment that we have worked on successfully recently, obtaining state funding totaling 500 million for transportation improvements along the I-5 JBLM corridor, facilitating the JBLM Army SPEA 2020 Community Listening Session at the McGavick Center, which is a big, big event, helping to establish Rally Point 6 in Lakewood that's since been incorporated into the USO. He's recognized for supporting our military service members and their families, including leading and organizing events for soldiers and families returning from deployment, such as the Raiders Return Celebration parade that we held on September of 2013, which as many of you remember, welcomed home the 42 Striker Brigade Command Combat Team. And he's done a lot of military-related support activities, including going out to actually meet individual soldiers with then Congressman Denny Heck. And, you know, it's just really good work that was recognized and honored. So Don, thank you for all you've done. It is an award well-deserved on that, so.
Well, thank, thank you. I just have to, to show this off, to show you how nice they, they are to us. This is actually crystal, and it weighs about 10 pounds. It's not acrylic like other things I've received in the past.
It was. Or that you may receive in the future. We'll see. Yeah, we might have paper by that time.
Well, I, yeah, when I, after, for nine years on the Pierce Transit Board, I got a certificate off a copy machine, so.
Yeah, you know, could have been an ORCA card. Well, thank you for all your work on that, and again, well deserved. And then the last comment before we go to an executive session, Mr. Cofield has shined up the final vestiges of his State of the City address, which if you're going to go to the Chamber event on the 10th this Thursday, he will be presenting the State of the City, correct? And then the following Friday on the 11th of February to Lakewood Rotary. So tune in because you will hear all sorts of good things about the State of the City. And as one public commenter questioned, how do we measure, gauge our success? It's our council goals and objectives that we have steadfastly adopted, and we will certainly measure our success through that lens. So with that, the city council will recess into executive session for approximately 15 minutes pursuant to RCW 423110 Sub 1 Sub I to discuss with legal counsel representing the city litigation or potential litigation. The council is not expected to take action following the executive session other than to adjourn the meeting. So council members, if you would please exit to the private Zoom meeting at this time.